Good evening. Welcome to the January 4th Merrimack School Board meeting. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is public participation. I'm not seeing any public. Do we have any emails, Shannon?
There are no emails.
Okay. And next up, number three, is new business. I'd like to welcome up Heather Barker for the formal presentation on the Student Services Budget. Also, for anyone presenting tonight, please feel free, if you're comfortable, you can take your mask down when you're talking, if you're comfortable. That can be helpful.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I've brought along Fern Sidon, who is our Director of Student Wellness, as part of our budget this year, excitingly is including some SEL components. So, thank you for having us tonight. So, the first questions, I'm just gonna introduce this. Our first questions come from School Board Member Barnes, and they have to do actually with the, some new budget line items. So, the first one is the SEL interventions and contracted services. Fern, you want to take that one?
Sure. The question is, "Please provide details about this line. It is not in the breakout. It is a new expenditure of $104,000. These funds are new in our budget to accommodate the hiring of SEL interventionists and mental health providers who can supplement and support our current building staff in meeting the diverse, complex needs of our students. This funding will be used to support all students across the district. We want to provide support in the form of embedded professional development, co-facilitation of groups, and collaboration to enhance and expand our Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 SEL supports for students. Through these collaborative relationships, we can offer building-wide and small-group evidence-based interventions as we continue to develop our multi-tiered systems of support for all students in Merrimack. Through this strategic approach of developing the systems to support the SEL needs of our students, we will provide an aligned cohesive system of care that is sustainable and efficient."
Can I just pause for a minute? I'd like to add that we are in different places at different levels in the district. In our K6 program, we're in year four. We had a piloting year, and we are now three years in on an SEL universal curriculum. At our secondary level, we are really in those early stages of exploration and piloting advisory and expanded homeroom. So, really, the reason why you're seeing this is not as targeted or as like formally, you know, fleshed out. It's because at different buildings and different levels at the district, we are in different places.
Thank you. And actually, if I can, on the question, I'm very supportive of this. And the other question I had is, C-O-N-T-Serve means Contracted Services. So, is there a short-term goal to establish programs and a long-term goal to have permanent personnel? Because these initiatives are absolutely imperative, and I support them 1,000%. But I want to make sure that we're setting you up for success with a stable support system to be able to really develop and grow in that area. So, I didn't see the breakout. It's like I couldn't really see what the long game was.
So, to be really frank, I really appreciate, we appreciate that level of support because actually, we're building the capacity right now in the system and piloting different things in different places. At the same time, we don't have established roles and job descriptions, and it's really important, having spent a lot of years in public schools, you really need to have the culture ready to receive the roles. So, really, this is an opportunity to do exactly what you're talking about. Short-term, and then the longer-term picture obviously would be to have, for example, each building potentially having an SEL interventionist who might lead the universal team, support the secondary and tertiary teams in the building, facilitate. We're not really there yet, but we know we want to do more than we did this past year. So, we wanted to earmark this set of funds. Those funds could be used potentially to hire district employees, either part or full-time. I mean, it's not a big amount of money.
That's why I asked you the amount as well.
It's really seed money. That's what it is. It's the getting it going kind of thing. You can look for us coming back next year, looking for more, obviously, because if you are gonna have this formal system in place, you would need to have the funds for those positions. And that is going to bring us actually to, School Board Member Hardy actually asked some similar questions just around the same line.
Well, I will yield, so I don't steal Jenna's thunder, because I'm sure those questions are awesome.
I would also, just to, we had, you know, when we talked about Greater Nashua Mental Health and that MOU, so this is thinking too about flexibly accommodating some of this range of things that can happen when you're, you know, within those interconnected frameworks that you can kind of partner more. That's where that idea of co-facilitation of groups, embedded professional development, those are things that we can infuse our system with, with this kind of seed money to kind of grow that capacity, which is really what we're trying to do. So, getting to School Board Member Hardy's question, I'm gonna skip to that one just so that we can, because they're pretty similar. They were there the same line, and I'm on page eight. The question is, "I do not want to see our SEL services contracted out. I think this is a poor use of funds, and it does not serve our population best. What contracted services specifically are you envisioning? My other concern comes from the wording of, in the description of SEL being provided for students identified as highly at risk. Obviously, we need to give this population all of the support they need to succeed. However, a ton of resources are generally available to those considered highly at risk. I would hope that our vision for SEL would be targeted at all students. I would like to see strategic and coordinated Tier 1 supports adopted in a meaningful way that builds SEL skills from pre-K to grade 12, supported by part or full-time staff positions. I feel that this money, or maybe slightly more, would be better utilized to start building a staff team, part or full-time, to drive SEL initiatives in buildings and provide SEL support to students at the building level. I would like to see the purpose of this line item change and the amount adjusted." We were reviewing, this is off my script, but we did review that line item, and it does say "at risk" in the line item, but we were talking about how, quite honestly, things like, we do see it expanded beyond that. So, just want to acknowledge that to begin with because that was an important discrepancy. "We are currently in the exploration phase of the district-wide adoption of an MTSSB system, working with a consultant from the Bureau of Student Wellness, from the DOE. While we work on constructing and aligning this system, we want to continue using contracted support, though that's flexible. Done well, this could evolve into full-time district employees that can meet students' SEL needs in the future as an integrated member of the MTSSB system of care. Currently, the vision is to hire SEL support staff who can offer short-term solution-focused SEL interventions at Tier 2 or Tier 3, integrating this work into the SEL programming within the school setting. This person could also offer professional development to support helper groups or even collaborate with staff to provide needed support. While piloted through Student Services, this could support any student in the building. Research strongly supports systemically-integrated SEL, including Tier 1 support provided by teachers and support staff within classroom settings and supported by school-wide Tier 1 structures. We agree that the, we agree that the vision is for all students, pre-K to 12, to have meaningful SEL experiences that develop the core competencies needed for wellness and success in school and beyond. Through this strategic approach of developing the systems to support SEL needs of our students, we will provide an aligned cohesive system of care that is sustainable and efficient." So, our work with the MTSS coordinator or consultant from the state is really critical, and it comes from the Promising Futures Grant, which is an exploratory grant. So, we're in that phase of developing those really solid systems that are gonna align things across the district, and I'm really excited by that work, so.
I just wanted to say that, you know, after I read this, we've started a dialogue, including with Bill, and you've answered my questions even more specifically. And I guess what I'm hearing you say that makes me feel good is that nothing's set in stone. If we find that this money is best used to hire our own staff as opposed to using consultants, as we talk to the people there, that's great. I just want to make sure that all students, that it's not just targeted for our highest-risk students. They need help, absolutely. I don't want to deny them any of it, but our Tier 1 kids will become our Tier 2 and our Tier 3 kids if we don't triage and help now. So, I'm glad that that conversation is gonna be continuing and ongoing as to how the best way to launch this and use this is. And I would love continual updates about that.
Yeah, yeah.
And to be part of the conversation, too.
Yes.
I'd like to add to the important here focus on that second paragraph, which is really around that Tier 2 and Tier 3, because again, in our K6 program, they have a strong, universal program in place. Our classroom teachers are implementing that already, right? So, really, for them, they're in a different place than the middle school and the high school, where they really are ready for that support and facilitation around building those Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports for students. And again, all students would access Tier 1. Students can access Tier 2, Tier 3, and then, of course, there's special education for other students who need that as well. So, again, acknowledging in this, it can't be set in stone because across the district, we're in different places, and we want to acknowledge and respect that.
And it's such a fluid time right now with mental health, as you know, as you, you know, we've communicated about how, you know, a student who's accessing Tier 1 services today could be, Tier 2 services tomorrow could be, that person could be Tier 1, you know. All kids need that universal level, so that's like just a critical concern, so.
Another question along those lines, because I think, you know, it does, you touched on it. That was another question I had as well, but the fact is, we have had Second Step in place for three years?
Three years and a piloting year prior to that. That's right.
Right, so four years. So, with that, we're gonna have kids that have four years of that experience. So, does this Band-Aid those kids coming in, so you're gonna be doing those interventional programs, but then you would build maybe something that builds off of what they were kind of, you know, introduced to? Because they've never, some of these kids will have at least an extensive, if not an entire, educational experience with SEL programs built into their education. So, I guess the thing is, what you put into place for the high school now are for kids that never had Second Step in their experience, and then some middle school as well. So, I guess that's, that's the question is, is this good Band-Aiding what you're doing to kind of get those programs in, but are we also looking at that secondary track? Are we built off of what Second Step can do, take those skill sets, and then kind of modify so that they don't get kind of a disconnect with the evolution of supports that they're familiar with?
So, when the piloting happened, the middle school did look at the program Second Steps and felt that it wasn't appropriate. What they did instead was, they worked off an advisory curriculum and then took elements of it. So, they've done, rather than purchasing a whole curriculum that's designed, right, like the K6 program, what they did instead is they are doing, taking pieces of other programs that fit with the focus at that universal level developmentally, which is appropriate for secondary kids, on relationship, having that home base, one adult in a building that's connected to you through advisory or extended homeroom. But again, there's a lot of construction that needs to happen at that universal level. Interestingly, at the high school level, that's where that co-located counselor is at this point, right? Mental health counselor. So, that person is supporting really that high-level intensive, individualized support for children who need that short-term support and then help getting into, right, through facilitated referral into the mental health agency in Nashua. So, that was something they were looking for. So, again, there's that fluidness in this right now because in the different levels, they're looking for different things. But we know, which is why we're part of that MTSS exploratory grant, that we really need to build all three pieces of the system simultaneously, right? And uniquely for each level.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yep. Kim?
Can I just want to mention too that Fern and Heather and myself have gone to look at different curriculum that would be appropriate, more appropriate.
Yep.
The problem with using Second Step all the way up through grade 8 is the kids almost get tired of it. It kind of loses its potency.
Yeah.
So, we have looked at some various curriculum. It's just, we don't want to just adopt a curriculum without building the structure that's gonna help support it, especially at middle and high. So, I think this is a good, I think that this is a smart way for us to progress because we need staff to even understand, you know, we need to do so much professional development around social-emotional learning. So, we have some thoughts in mind about different curriculum that could be further down the road.
Thank you for that, Kim. That's really helpful.
Lori?
So, I just want to say that, you know, I really appreciate all this work because, you know, with any change, it obviously takes three to five years to implement. You're talking about systems, you're talking about targeting populations, advisories in middle schools, you know, transitioning, any grade that has to transition, that's very difficult for kids and having those transitions, especially freshman year. Like, everyone talks about senior year, but it really comes down to freshman year, because that freshman year is gonna set the tone for every other year that they have. So, this is a lot of hard work, and it's hard to get that foundation down, but I can really see where we're gonna go. So, I'm very appreciative of it.
Great. Thank you.
I just had, I just had one last thing I wanted to say, and when we were talking about the curriculum, and I feel like I said it in here, of course, can't find it, because I said a lot of things, but... And that was my thing too with the curriculum is, you know, it's great to have a curriculum, but my concern there, and I wrote it somewhere, but I don't know where it is, is of course, the teachers.
Question 8.
Is it question 8? Was it question 8?
Or is it 7? I think it's question 7. We're gonna come to, get to that.
Okay, right. We'll come back. We'll come back to that.
It is, we're gonna circle back there.
So, the next question is from Board Member Barnes. "I know we are using Second Step for SEL for students through grade 6. Please advise what your programs are running through your departments for middle and high school students and what funding is there to support it. If there are programs of value not in the budget, I for one would be willing to entertain it, considering the impact of the pandemic, the pandemic has had on all students, namely, those who never had SEL curriculum, as is the case in the higher grades, since we have only had it in the district for a couple of years." The response is, "Our vision for SEL across all levels is consistent with our original proposals to the board on adoption of SEL within the district. We are still in the phase of building capacity and innovating ways to ensure full integration of systemic SEL to support the advisory blocks and what currently has been the extended homerooms, building on programs that both schools have already begun, using grant money from the Promising Futures Grant." So, we really, the Promising Futures Grant, we really started where the people were, where there was interest in that idea of diffusion theories, to try to build capacity, starting from people who were early adopters, who were really interested. And we have some wonderful teacher leaders engaged in this. So, at the high school, there have been two teachers who have led the way by using, by building out a 9 through 12 executive functioning program for use in the homerooms, along with extensive professional development for teachers, based on Peg Dawson's work in executive functioning, and it's really quite remarkable. It's embedded in the Canvas program and in their, for homerooms. At our middle school, they have built their own advisory program based on responsive classroom for middle school advisories. Examples of other possible programs to augment the planned universal programs could be the Character Strong Program for middle school, as well as other grade-level programs. There's Indeflex programming, that's coming this year actually through the grant as well, and an expanded homeroom orientation, freshman orientation program. The selection would be the result of close collaboration between our school-based leadership team and district leadership. So, this, when we were looking at this, we were really, I was trying to consult with, obviously, the people in, you know,
Principals.
Principals to say where, yeah, and leadership team to just talk about where we, how can we build this in a way that's organic to the school. So, that's, that's the answer to that one. And Heather, you're next.
Any questions follow up on that? Okay.
Okay, so, question three comes related to our budget line for Speech and Language, PT, and OT, and it comes from School Board Member Jenna Hardy. "On page nine of the Special Service Budget, why are these contracted services, which are far more expensive, as opposed to full or part-time employed district staff?" So, interestingly, I've been asked this question since I came in 2019 to present the 2020-2021 school budget. Student Services has been exploring the cost of employed district staffers and contracted services. For many of these positions currently, this is, this is sort of the hard part. This would be a really engaging, interesting process to really look at, transitioning things, for example, school psychology, some other key positions into district positions. The hard part is that currently, there is unbelievable critical shortages in the field, in every field related to special education. So, at this time, we are competing with private companies who are offering higher wages. They may not offer the same benefit packages or other things, but those wages are very competitive. So, over the past two years, we actually have not been able to even hire. We had a district Speech and Language position this past year. We had zero applicants, not a single applicant for that position. We ended up having to hire a contracted service provider with the idea that we would again post it this spring and hire a district person if we can. That would be our goal. So, our goal would be to have district employees. The current landscape is not really conducive to that. Additionally, we've had occupational therapy assistant positions since I've been here that have remained unfilled on the district side and had to be provided through contracted services because we had no applicants. So, that's the reality of that situation at this time. Interestingly, New Hampshire, not unlike other states, we are, it's not a Merrimack issue. It's a state and national issue. So, there are critical shortages, as I said. So, we can't fill all our MTA contracted positions. We actually, for the first time since I've been here this year, actually had to fill a special ed teacher position with a contracted service provider because we had no applicants. And again, we've continued to leave those jobs posted, hoping that we would get a viable candidate. So, it is not a good situation in terms of hiring right now. Legally, as you know, we must provide the special educational-related service that are required in students' IEPs by any means possible. And then, I've talked to Assistant Superintendent Matt Chevannell because, interestingly, in having had to deal with this for the last two and a half years, it's come to our attention that actually, the cost of a district employee, their salary may be actually lower, but with the benefits, if they have a family plan, for example, the cost of that insurance, the payroll taxes, the retirement, that has gone up significantly each year, the district portion that needs to be paid, there actually ends up being a marginal difference between the cost of that contracted service provider versus a district employee. Now, having said that, when you can hire a district employee, there's obviously the benefit of, they're part of the school team, they're part of that family, the culture. It's not like, you know, they can say at the end of the year, "Well, you know, I'm moving on to another company because we can't keep those employees necessarily if their employer wants to move them or they choose to leave." So, the idea here isn't that, "Oh, we should just go with contracted service providers because the cost is the same or close." It's really, where can we get really strong providers for our students? We want the best we can get. So, at this time, we'll do district employees, we'll do contracted, that's what I'm saying, for those SEL interventionists. If we can get people on the district contracted side, Matt's been like, "That's perfectly fine. However, we can get the right candidates for our job." So, I hope that answers that question.
Lori, wrap it up.
So, my only comment there is, going back to what Jenna said earlier, I do think, and I understand the whole thing with retirement and all of that. It's hard, it's difficult because of our teacher's contract is not the highest-paying contract, probably in the lowest third. So, these contracted service people are supposed to go on a teacher's contract. So, we would need to look at a different contract to bring them in. But for me, just having the personal connection and the belonging of a school district, I think it may, it's all that we're doing here, so I understand the downfalls. I mean, you know, in the district that I work in, Speech and Language, they've been looking for three of them for the last five years. I mean, so I understand the difficulty. But if we could just keep trying to think outside the box, I think it's really important. If we could get people that would be really connected to our district, that would be awesome.
I am absolutely with you. I am with you because I, when I came here, I actually spoke about this here. I had not ever worked anywhere where there was this much contracted service. So, and again, it would be great to have some of those folks. And again, I am familiar with the situations in other districts as well. People are having a hard time hiring anyone. In fact, recently, as we have reached out to look for different positions, even agencies who are headhunter agencies can't find people for some of these jobs. So, it's a big challenge. So, we have some ideas on creating pipelines and partnerships with universities, but those are certainly things that we could look at in the future, so I welcome that. Okay? Question number four is also related to the high school-related services. And in this case, we were calling them SEL services at the high school level because they fell into the category of things like, yes, the homeschool liaisons, those different, our transition coordinator and transition coaches and the folks that provide those kinds of supports to kids that are not necessarily academic supports. Jenna's question was related to understanding why that budget line had doubled. And actually, my response was that last year, when I came before the board, we actually spent the entire budget meeting talking about how, what I did from the 2020-21 to the 21-22 budget was taking all the money that was like, for example, for the high school-related services, putting them in one line, and taking all the money for the middle school-related, putting them in one line, or taking the, you know, elementary, and trying to put things in the right budget line versus, they were in all different places. So, that actually, in 2020-2021, that money wasn't, we didn't add, we didn't double the budget on those lines. What we actually did is we pulled it from different places and put it in these lines. So, it looks like it doubled in some places, or maybe even tripled, or whatever. But the reality was, it simply came from somewhere, because if you recall the budget last year, I don't, I don't think it was, it was, Matt, I think it may have even been under 3% or somewhere around that, the increase, which was related to contract costs and related service increases. But that actual change was so that we could have more transparency in the budget, and people could actually see that line. So, this year's budget, the 2022-2023 budget, actually has those line items in the right place. So, this is specific to the high school, those particular services. They were, they went from 125 to 315, but not really. In the 2021-2022 year, it actually was 315, and it was pulled from different places. What we did this year, though, is we did increase that by $10,000 because we wanted to ensure that we would be able to meet our obligation for compensatory education and any additional services that we're gonna need to provide because of those learning loss, those gaps, students having to quarantine, that have been created by interrupted school and the pandemic. So, the reality is, we increased that this year by $10,000. You're welcome. Number five is also related to, this one is related to tutors, contracted services, and this is across the district, this particular line item has to do with. So, School Board Member Hardy asks, "I would like specific and detailed explanation for what is covered in this line and why it's quadrupled." The explanation is very general, i.e., support all students' social-emotional well-being across the district is very general. So, again, this has to do with that 2020 to 2021 budget, transitioning to last year where we realigned the budget line so that they actually covered the right things in the right places. So, that budget line was not reflective of all the contracted services. So, this is, for example, like neuropsychologists, bringing in specialists, all of those different services that you need that are very specific to particular students' IEPs. They're not necessarily a level-specific, but across the district, having those funds available that are required by law in those students' IEPs. So, we've moved that, put them in this line. There was no increase in the cost for those services in the 21-22 budget, with the exception of that 3% increase that we anticipated that contracted service providers were telling us they were going to be billing us for. So, this line also, so this line also pays for mental health counseling, the additional homeschool liaisons that we added last year, we added two more, and all of those other services that we need for students' IEPs. So, for this year, we did increase this line as well by $10,000 to actually accommodate that same issue that we anticipate, which is, we are gonna have some compensatory education because some kids may have not been able to get services because a provider was out due to a quarantine or COVID. Same thing for students. We also have the issues related to students having learning loss or gaps created by the past few years. And this line also expands to not just students, but also students and their families. So, this line actually incorporates supports for families as well. Any questions? Okay, the next question has to do with our new SEL piece of the budget.
So, this question is from Board Member Jenna Hardy. "What does..." "What does the summer program look like? What is the vision?" So, building out our supports for transitions is a priority of the District System of Care Committee. It's one of the categories that the System of Care Committee focuses on in our, in our model. Building off the limited offerings for SEL last summer and our regular summer school programs, we have developed a budget here to cover stipends for educators, counselors, behavior specialists, homeschool liaisons, and other professional staff who could support a broader array of SEL programs and transitional opportunities. Last year, we offered a short camp for self-regulation, which was well received. Student participation came from parent and school team referrals. Last year, we also provided a mindfulness consultant, somebody to really focus on self-regulation for the 8.5, and she worked collaboratively with the person running the 8.5 program. Furthermore, counselors were available to provide school-based transitional programming for those who required it before starting school. We would like to think through the needs of students in these areas and provide creative and innovative supports for the summer. So, the model, it really is about providing a continuity of connection and relationships. That's really it, and it's really about, you know, if a, it's really very fluid in terms of who it serves because it really can be, again, as we were saying, we don't know, in this pandemic, we are just understanding that there could be many different kinds of scenarios for different kinds of kids who need support, just even if it's just tours of the building or small groups, short-term groups to meet new stu, meet, meet people or transitioning new students, so.
Even just, they made phone calls this past summer, checked in with families, did some quick Zoom. So, whatever kids needed, it was really well received and we want to expand that.
And my, my thought there too was, and it sounds like you're thinking along these general lines, but not specifically, is, you know, having several kids have gone through the district. I, this was my first year having a student go through the 8.5 Academy, and wow, I was just so impressed, like, what a difference it made for, for him. And I, I would love to see something like that, maybe not that length, maybe not so academic, but something like that for the various big transitions, like from elementary even to JMU's, from JMU's to the middle school. Maybe a week, maybe two days, whatever. But something like that for those kids in that population where that transition creates anxiety. If, if some of this money could be used for something along those lines, I think it would be huge because, you know, I'm the mom that was just like, "You know, it's gonna be fine, we're gonna take a tour, it's gonna be fine, you're gonna be fine, it's gonna be fine." And, you know, for my one kid, I don't think it would have been fine without 8.5. And you know what? I think that there were struggles in those other transitions that could have been mitigated with something along those lines, so. And I know, you know, while many kids don't need it, and some of my own, that, some do. And there's a lot of them that really do, and I think a lot of people would take advantage of it, even if it's something very small.
It's the number one things parents bring up in parent conversations, transitions, and how could we improve them.
Yeah, I would love to see something like that.
And the efficacy is there in the research that transitions are that point of real vulnerability. And so, boosting what we offer there and thinking through, and that is something we've, we spoke to the, when we, I had initially talked to the high school administration, there was an expression of a need to really look at even, you know, look at that and make sure that that was valued in, in our work. So, I'm glad that that's, that's in here. I'm really excited for that.
Well, and I would say even transition for parents.
Oh, yeah.
As, as they prepare.
Yes.
As they prepare to, you know, putting my, you know, now that my kids have gone through every transition, as a parent, especially with my oldest, I didn't know what to expect, you know, as, so much. And I just really felt like I had a hard time wrapping my head around, you know, how life was going to be after that transition, you know, for my family and schedule and drop-offs and bus and when I, parent pickup and, you know, all of those things that, you know, become like, you know, just, you know, automatic once you know it, but until you know it, you know, it can be hard. So, I would just say, I just wanted to add that two cents.
Very good.
That's definitely an area of focused parent engagement.
Especially like, you know, seniors, because so many of them will self-sabotage right at the end, right? That's when they have all that stress and then that's when all of, all the things that you're trying to prevent and teach them, they will have those skills by the time they get there, so they don't self-sabotage.
Yeah, we've seen that, right?
I, I want to add to that, that I, I think what we're also seeing is we're seeing students make these transitions when really emotionally, they're not at that stage because they've lost a year. So, developmentally, they're more like, say, seventh graders rather than eighth graders being coming freshmen. And so, I think even as we move forward out of the pandemic, it's even going to be more critical to have those really intentional gray level transitions all the way through because we're, we're going to deal with a group, a year group of students who are really not where we would have liked them to have been when they, before they made those transitions.
It's a great point, preparing educators as well to receive students who are, there's, there's that lag. There's a lag.
Yes.
Yep.
So, the next question also comes from Board Member Hardy, and I think this is the one we had referred to before. "I am concerned about the purchasing, purchasing a curriculum that will fall to the teachers to learn, manage, and teach. That is the last thing the teachers need right now. While that curriculum looks great, I would like to see the budget allow for SEL specialists in district to be the ones to learn, master, and teach the curriculum. See my previous point. I would rather invest in staff this year, curriculum next year. In Hudson, we are creating our own curriculum, it's more than enough for the year." So, this is where we were discussing how this is the line item for elementary, and this is where we were discussing the implementation, full implementation of our universal SEL program K through six. And I've just recently been going into classrooms and seeing, seeing those curriculums in full swing and been just very impressed when it's fully, with the full implementation. So, this will be the third full year of implementation as universal SEL program K six. This program was strategically rolled out beginning in 2017. In this way, we successfully built capacity and buy-in in an incremental fashion. We are at varying stages of system change, from initial implementation, which is more like JMU's where they are more recently implementing, and to elaboration and regeneration, which is where the, the classrooms, the schools that have been engaged with this for a while longer. To this end, this line item is, is really about maintenance of materials, a lot with that, as well as augmenting the program and seeing where the gaps are, because we're starting to see where gaps are. For instance, when I spoke to the, the counselors and the administrators, we were talking about the bullying prevention, that that unit is not as strong as it could be, and how could we maybe explore expanding where that, those needs, like, how can we augment now and fill in some of the gaps that we see? Executive functioning is another area that could be filled more and expanded upon. But also, at, we're also really ready to populate the tier two and tier three, especially the tier two interventionists, our counselors, others who could now start really using the, the materials to do more with those small groups. And because, as we know, universal curriculums serve, you know, a certain number, 80%, say, but then you're going to have kids who need that more, more than that for certain things, for certain areas. So, we'd like to start building that capacity. We were talking about zones of regulation, social thinking, and other evidence-based programs, interventions that can improve programming across the tiers. We are in the exploration stage of MTSS with the support of the Bureau of Wellness Consultant, as we mentioned. Over the next year to two years, we will be building our universal secondary and tertiary teams at each school, and at that time, we'll be exploring the staffing of the three tiers. Culture and readiness will be critical to the success and implementation of this work.
Excuse me, Lori?
So, I just want to say how supportive I am, especially the bullying prevention. New Hampshire has one of the strongest bullying, anti-bullying laws in the, in the nation. And our students need to have these skills because bullying even happens in adulthood. So, they need to be prepared on how they're going to handle themselves in, in real life.
We've been talking a lot about aligning that too with across the four elementary schools making, well, especially the three lower as they then all join together in the upper L, giving people, kids the same language so that there, so there's a lot of alignment that can be done. So, and that is very much tier one. SEL does support that, or, you know, Second Step does address relationship skills and assertiveness and all of that. But, but the bullying prevention training can be, I think, we, you know, everybody agrees that it could be improved.
Kim?
And I just wanted to say with the adoption of the Second Step curriculum, we did, at our August Academy, several years back, three years back, we did do extensive professional development, and it's very much, the program is very focused on classroom teachers taking responsibility for some of that development of the social skills, early social skills for, for students. So, it's very much tier one. I think in the past, what we've seen is that a student might have an issue with maybe a friendship and they'll, the response might be, "Go see the counselor," where we really want to have the teacher who's with the student for those six hours a day really being addressing, like I said, remember the strategy, remember the strategy. So, when you, when I walk into classrooms at the elementary level, I see and hear it, the language across the classrooms, and it's really wonderful to see that, even across the Unified Arts, because we have all the same posters and the same training and the same language. So, I can see it, I can see it, you can feel it in the buildings. And what I wanted to mention is that, that there's kits that come along with this. So, say, for example, you add a fourth grade like they did at Thorntonsbury, you need to purchase another kit so that every teacher has the materials they need in hand.
And then those gaps where they found, you know, after they've taught it now for three years, they can see places where they want to augment it. So, we wanted to have some funds for them to be able to do that.
And, and I totally agree with what you're saying. I think it's so powerful when the teachers are empowered and they're trained and they're doing those things. The cool thing about having an in-house staff person, and this is why I so advocate for it, and I know it's because it's what I do, but what happens is, like you said, something happens in the classroom and usually the teacher could say, "Go, go see the school counselor." What can happen in a school like where I'm at is what they do is they call me in the office and say, "Hey, can you come up here and cover my classroom so that I can have this conversation with the student?" So, the student's still not going to the school counselor, and even though I'm the interventionist, I can be called in to cover a classroom so the teacher can have that conversation. Then the teacher and I connect on it and we start, we just monitor the watching of the student. So, that's why I'm so passionate about having a human person in the building, especially at the elementary level, to help do some of those things. And so, just, that's just kind of putting that out there, because I think you're absolutely right. That's so critical. And it's hard for a teacher to stop everything and address it in the moment unless there's, you know, another person that can swap out, so.
So, you know what's interesting about what you're talking about here is Hudson was a sister district with Merrimack, Londonderry, and Salem in our South Central System of Care Collaborative. Back in September, I reached out to some of those folks, and then again this past week, and we're going to start meeting again in late January. So, we'll be able to see those where different places have done different things. And, and one of the powerful things about Merrimack is that it partners with other districts and works collaboratively in that South Central region and beyond. So, I'm looking forward to hearing some of those things. Yep?
So, I did this one already.
Yep, you already did. So, we're on to page nine, which is co-curricular student services. This is a question from School Board Member Shannon Barnes. "I see for good reason par educator budgets for co-curricular activities. The funds, funds are allocated but underutilized. What can be done to increase participation so there is inclusion and fulfillment by those who would be in receipt of these supports? As much as it helps those kids by participating, I am a firm believer it also helps all students having such an inclusive environment in all areas." And then, the second question will be, "How are these accounts level funded considering there's a contractual salary increase with our existing collective bargaining agreement with Mesa?" So, in response to the first part of the question, the past two and a half years really aren't a great indicator. They are underutilized because for a long time, we didn't actually even have co-curricular, extracurricular, or after-school opportunities. The funds are allocated specifically to that budget line for the inclusion of students with disabilities in any and all co-curricular, extracurricular, and after-school sponsored events, so they have equal access and the opportunity for equal participation. The funds are used to remove barriers to participation and offer opportunities to experience the same opportunities as their neurotypical peers. Additionally, it offers all students the benefit of an inclusive community. Building leadership teams and IEP teams can advocate for increased opportunity for participation in our current offers, offerings, and those same building-level teams and IEP teams could explore other opportunities that may not be currently offered here for our neurotypical and neurodiverse students in order to participate in different clubs, sports, and other activities together. For example, best buddies, opportunities for, you know, unified sports. There are lots of different things, as well as clubs and activities from the elementary through the high school level. Those would certainly happen at those levels, buildings, and we would certainly be supportive of them. Those funds pay for adults to support students so that they can have a successful experience, and it's a really important and, and really worthy part of our budget. Both special education and civil rights law require that schools provide equal access and equal, equal opportunity. Regarding the second question, the level funding is a result of the Mesa contract stipulation that new employees come in at the bottom three steps regardless of their years of service. So, what's been happening since I've come is as people have retired or left for other jobs who have been here for several years, the folks that we're replacing them with cross-leaps because of that constraint, therefore, at this time, there is no need to increase this budget line.
And on that level, I'm, I know it's, it's coming up in the high school as well because unified soccer does, it sells a line item, but it doesn't have money assigned to it. I just really think that, you know, from what we're coming out of, and we're doing so many interventions to, to gain that academic gap, I think creating that full school experience, you know, the extracurriculars, the, you know, the sports, the activities, the clubs, on top of the interventions, it's not all going to be so school-focused and the child won't feel that. All those interventions have to be to catch them up, but really, I, again, I just want to make sure that the whole child really gets the, the whole experience. And you're right, there is definite underutilization. And I think whatever we can do to help that, I think, will probably, you know, the, the, I guess, all the SEL we've talked about all night, really. But in, on top of that, I think it helps every student, you know, compassion, collaboration. You know, everyone's going to, you know, participate at a different pace and a different level and, you know, the kindness that we're trying to really, you know, push out into, into our, you know, our hallways. All of that can really be accomplished in an activity that's just fulfilling to them. They don't realize all the other, they're not there for the secondary benefit, but the secondary benefit is probably the most important part.
I can't agree with you more, and I actually came from a district that had a middle school and high school unified program. Very robust, very well received, and I am more than supportive of that. Actually, right before the pandemic hit, I had actually met with the state leaders from best buddies too to kind of get that really up and going in, in a robust way here in Merrimack. So, I am more than happy to participate with our middle and high school and elementary programs to bring those kinds of programming in because it offers a really well-rounded opportunity for every child.
And I understand that with some of these kids, medical sensitivity becomes an issue, and, you know, being around more kids in the pandemic is probably, you know, every minute, you know, has its own risk. So, you have to pick your, your battles. But, you know, with that, I, I do hope it gets utilized to its, to its best intent in, in that we can get what we're looking for, for, for all students really that, that comes from these funds.
Okay, the next question has to do with our summer programs and student services. This one has to do with the level funding of them for the educational gains as we're working to close the pandemic-related gaps. For student services, our budget for 2021-2022, last year, we came to you anticipating that for 21-22, we were going to need those funds last summer to offer that expanded, what we called that extended, extended school year program. We did provide that. We provided services from early June, like as soon as school got out literally for some students. And for some students, it went all the way till school started because that's what they needed, that individual student. So, we actually increased that budget line significantly last year, and we've left it. In fact, I actually forecast last year that I anticipated we would leave it at least for this year and possibly in the next couple of years, why we deal with these delays and these gaps and the learning loss. So, we didn't increase it this year, we've kept it at that same higher level. We are anticipating providing those same level of robust summer programs that are individualized and can extend from school closing to school opening, depending on what that IEP team decides for that student for their extended school year. Anything else on that one? Okay, and then, these are from questions here. The next questions are from School Board Member Welyumi and School Board Member Rothaus. "How do you determine the number of par professionals at your different schools?" How do you determine the number of para-professionals at your different schools, elementary school, for example? So the paraeducators in Merrimack are assigned based on the number of hours for either shared or individualized services in each student's individual IEP. So that's how it, that's how it actually happens at the building and across the district. So for example, if, we actually did this several times over the past three years, there typically there is between, let's say, 20 and 23 or 24 in those lower elementary schools. You might actually have some bumping up into the upper if you have a larger transition of students who require them. Same thing might happen between the upper and the middle, or even amongst the three or lower elementary schools where, for example, over at Reed's Ferry, we might need to move somebody over to DFS. So it's a fluid process. So it is determined based on that. We do use a rubric that was, we have, it's a combination of a rubric we developed here in Merrimack with a protocol that was created collaboratively with the South Central Special Director Group for IEP teams to kind of guide them through that process of determining the level of individualized support a student might need in terms of that pushing in that level of support in that, in a human, a paraeducator. So that is determined by that IEP. Okay? The second question has to do with the increase in specialized training of staff. That budget line went from 15K in 2021 to 24K anticipated for 22, 23. The reason for this increase has, has to do with staff. How many staff are trained in CPI each year? And what does it cost per staff member? And then there's a second question that has to do with, are all teachers in schools trained in disabilities? Like autism, ADHD, deafness, blindness, et cetera. And these, this question also comes from school board chair Welyumi and school board vice chair Rothaus. So this increase is due actually in the significant rise in cost of the nonviolent crisis intervention through the Crisis Prevention Institute, which is what we call CPI. The cost per person to have a trainer went from $700 a few years ago to $3,700, and it's $1,400 to renew that person's credential as long as it happens in that two-year span. If you go beyond the two-year span, you have to pay the $3,700 per person. When I came into Merrimack, they have a very robust, and we have continued that, train the trainer model. So each building has one, two, three, the goal would be to have at least two trainers at a building who can work with any staff in the building who need to be trained in CPI. And they can run annual training so that we don't have to send people somewhere else. It can happen in district. One of the bummers about the pandemic was that for some folks, some of those licenses lapsed. At the same time, other people have moved forward. We have maintained, moving that up to $24,000 allows us to make sure that we can actually meet that. Because if you have and try to have that, we actually asked this past summer for each school to send us who their people are, when they were credentialed, so that we can actually start to create a every other year kind of thing so that we probably could reduce that a little bit. But right now, we actually are doing some catching up for some school buildings where it lapsed or people left, and you actually have to train new people. So that is that significant increase in cost, which is ironic because one would wish, right, that in $24,000, you would have money to do other trainings. So getting to that second question, training for educators related to students with disabilities certainly could be explored. I mean, that would be a great thing to be offering as an option for folks as a strand in our August Academy or ongoing professional development opportunities. Right now, typically how that's done is all educators who are coming out of higher education have a subset, probably two courses in special education. And then if they have an interest in it, they, you know, they go that pathway through the professional development in our district or in training or coursework outside of that. But that would be a great thing that we could be doing to ensure that our entire faculty and staff have a basic level of knowledge. One thing we did do this past summer is we offered, and it was initially going to be a day-long institute for any new employee who were paraeducators. And we surveyed the staff and they, one of the things was like how to read an IEP or how to work with students in a classroom. So we created modules for them and we actually invited any paraeducator to join. We had more than 90 of those folks join us between the, I think it was about 30 new employees and then about 60 employees that had been here, who loved it. We plan on doing that again next year. So that could be something that we put together for the professional faculty as well. That's a great question. Thank you.
I would say to add to that too would be an area of like coaches, you know. Naturally, our educators are used to working with kids, working with IEP teams, you know, you know, not only by training and experience, they have a lot of experience. But we bring in coaches that don't necessarily have that experience. So and of course, I don't think we can put our coaches through a two-year, you know, degree to do this, but, you know, what can we do to at least let them know types of behaviors they might see? I mean, while protecting, you know, children's confidentiality, what do we see? How would that present? What are, what is the toolkit for you, coach, that when you see this, how would you handle it? What are some ways that you can do some interventions or escalate appropriately? And I just feel like, you know, every season, there should be something like that. That's just one thought. So it kind of fits in with the same, you know, line item and the line of questioning, but I wanted to add my two cents there.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
I'd also like to say that.
The next question. Sorry. Go ahead, Lori, because I was, I was jumping to the next question.
Oh, okay. I'm still on this one. Uh, just, again, with one of the goals the board has had is in recruiting really top-quality staff. And the thing I've been really excited about is seeing our higher education institutions implementing autism certificates and behavior certificates, things that you don't necessarily have to be a sped major for. But if you want to be a secondary or elementary or gen ed, you can still get those certificates in an area of interest that you have. And I think, I mean, gosh, I wish they would have done that 20 years ago. And so again, in our recruitment, those are the things we can be looking for in our teachers.
So I was just going to say, the next question that Cindy and I asked was a question you've already answered in other dialogues. So feel free to pass over that.
Great. So that actually is the last of our questions. Is there anything else?
So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, thank you so much.
May I make a comment? Heather, between you and Fern and Kim, several times you mentioned the importance of culture. And that is extraordinarily important when it comes to the social, emotional component of child development because it's the responsibility of everyone. And in this profession, sometimes we tend to think that, well, this component is a responsibility of someone else. This is not. This is the responsibility of, of all of us. And so I applaud you for taking that, that approach.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for spending your time with us tonight and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right. Next up is the presentation, Merrimack High School Budget. Stephen Clare, welcome. Peter Bergeron, welcome and welcome to your first budget review.
May I just say, Cindy, that Rich was not able to join us tonight because he's ill?
Okay. No, understood. Thank you. We certainly wish him a speedy recovery.
Happy to be here. Happy to be involved with you.
Same to you.
So the 2022, 23 budget statement?
Sorry, Steve, is your microphone?
Oh, okay. You'll find an overall below level funded budget with many level funded line items. Decrease in the overall budget is due to the mission of the Merrimack High School Drivers Education Program, which we no longer offer. There are some minor line items and that were adjusted to best meet the needs of some departments. But for the most part, dollar amounts remain the same as the 2020, 22 school year. Some of the bigger items we requested was renewing our actively learn for the English Language Department, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. The Social Studies Department has asked for replacement of criminology books. Our current ones are currently dated in 1999. The Social Studies Department has asked for a subscription to actively learn as well because we have some data from the English Department that I'll share later, that it's been a very valuable tool. And our, our Science Department is asking for a renewal of, renewal of tech software for online access that lasts a six-year period, and it's up for, for renewal this year. So moving into other questions, we're going to start with school board member Barnes. I'm going to go ahead and read her question and then either Peter and I will give a response. First question is, we have a school board that has worked to gain equal funding between athletics and co-curricular funding. This year's budget shows co-curriculars, co-curriculars getting $20,000 less. So Peter, I'll just pass that off to you.
Good evening. In terms of transportation, co-curricular groups have not traveled to a scheduled event or have not been denied transportation. We have level funded co-curricular to reflect more accurately what we spend. And I think it was five years ago where the board wanted to bring the co-curricular funding up with athletic transportation. And I thought that was a great idea, but over time we've realized, you know, the different trips we go on and many of these trips, like, for example, science Olympia or US First Robotics, they're not guaranteed they're going to go to the finals, you know. And if they are, which, you know, we've gone off to St. Louis or Detroit, obviously that's a great expense. But we have budgeted enough money that we could cover that expense. So. Any follow-up?
Yep. Are you good with that, Shannon?
I'm good.
Okay, thanks.
Second question is also from school board member Barnes. Her comment was athletic supplies are funded at $91,000 while co-curricular supplies are funded at $16,000. She's aware that the investment students have to make for their own uniforms, for co-curriculars to wear in competition, and the funding required for supplies to participate in programs that would not be possible without corporate sponsors stepping in. So the question she asked was, please provide what students are being asked to fund to participate in co-curriculars that may be preventing participation.
So I'll, I'll start and I'll add to it after.
Steve, if you could move your microphone maybe a little closer.
To me?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm having a little trouble hearing.
I take my mask off, but I'm currently, well, I'm currently in, monitoring, self-monitoring. Yes, yeah.
I'm in that situation myself.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying.
So I'll enter the first part of that. So athletic supplies do not include uniforms. This year, we do have a line item for that, but it is not all, it is for all related supplies. The majority of the supplies include rentals such as for Merrimack Ten Pin, West Side Arena for our ice hockey team, the Merrimack YMCA, Gymnastics Academy in Manchester, and GPS for soccer. So as I said, you spend between $45,000 to $50,000 in rentals alone.
Just to add to that, you know, in talking with Mr. Bergeron and Mr. Zimperi about their past co-curricular budgets, students are not being asked to fund any co-curricular supplies. You know, they, they couldn't recall a time in the past where if, if a group of students wanted to start a co-curricular project or group and they had a, a faculty member that would sponsor or be an advisor, they couldn't recall any time that there, that there wasn't funding made available for this, the co-curriculars. So they're, they're student-driven, and if co-curricular proposal has a sponsor or an advisor, the funding has always been made available. Next on page 12, another question from school board member Barnes. Why are there needed materials listed, no, why are there needed materials listed but no funding allocated for unified soccer? She's, I see minimal references to uniforms. How often do they purchase? Or are students purchasing on their own? So we kind of broke that up into two, two responses.
So we are not budgeting for unified soccer because we don't have enough student participation or interest in this, for this team, the field team. The line item was left in the budget. We didn't, you know, didn't put any money in. We were talking earlier, Steve and I, we've had unified volleyball in the past, and I think, I think that ebbs and flows, you know. So I think there will be years where we'll have a unified volleyball team or a soccer team. So the next part of the question, students do not purchase them on their own, the uniforms. Every three to five years, there's a rotation that we use. Every uniform has replaced once throughout the five years. So every like five, three to five years, we'll replace uniforms. We send many of our uniforms. That's a question later on. We'll talk about when we recondition our uniforms. We send them out, they get stitched, they get sanitized and washed, and it prolongs the life of the uniform.
School board member Barnes also asked, why do students pay for their own graduation cords? It seems like we are not rewarding their dedicated participation in programs. You know, over the years, you know, I did a little research on this, you know, this, this week. Over the years, there's been an increase of co-curricular clubs. We currently have around 27, all of which now want, offer cords at their, for the graduating seniors. So I checked, I checked on how these are paid for. Of the 27, 16 were paid for by club funds. Seven were paid for by students and four were currently unknown, but we're checking on that. And the stalls for our, our top 15% students in the graduating class were paid for by the school. And if the graduate wanted to keep, keep it, he or she would purchase it after graduation. With that said, I think, you know, co-curricular clubs is, is so important. And, and you had mentioned, I believe, school board member Barnes about the, how, you know, how social, emotional learning can grow organically through participation in athletics and in clubs. So we're going to look into, you know, those seven, those seven clubs that didn't have funding and, you know, try to help them out with that in the future. So.
Yeah. And I think you said also that some of, like, they're booster clubs or that kind of thing that would pay for some of those other clubs?
Yes.
The cords, I should say. And honestly, what, everything they do, and this is why I get, you know, I'm kind of harping on this a little bit, is they are our best ambassadors. They go out when they go to competition, when they are, you know, I mean, good lord, our Granite State Challenge, we're, you know, two-time defending champions. But, you know, on that note, there's so much that they're doing, you know, out of their heart that makes us look so good. And a $10 cord is the least we can do for those who have dedicated that time and dedication to those programs, when there's so many people wanting their time too, including their parents, because they're going to be leaving for college soon or something, or the military, which is another big one. And that was actually one that I remember there were questions on too in past years. Students who elected military service, and I know that there are, and I didn't put that in there. I'm sorry I didn't to those military families. But those are the things when we know they're enlisting as well, we know that we can call the recruiters and have those things ready at the ready because it just shows how we prepared them and the diversity of what they had. Honestly, those cords show us off so well. You know what I'm saying? Those, those shawls, those, those drapes. So it's just such a good way of, for us to, not only reward behavior, but it just shows all that we gave them opportunity to do to, to be a well-rounded individual on their way out, you know, with their families too. You know, so I, I just really think that that shouldn't be something that they'd have to question whether they got one or not. So.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, I just feel like that's something that, you know, as they're leaving the school, they should not have to pay for. That they've done all of this work up until that point and, you know, so if there's a cost associated that we need to put in the budget, I'm, I'm all for entertaining, doing that effective immediately, you know, with, with the next budget anyways.
I think you could liken it to, you know, a, a young lady or young man who plays a varsity sport. They're going to, they're going to get a letter and they're going to get a pin.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah. I just, I feel like we're maybe being a little nitpicky, you know, by.
Again, just the military thing too, and I do think you can get them from like the recruiters and stuff, but just when we know that they're going in, you know, we do have them stand up when they do dedicate to military service historically. But if they had the, the drapes on, usually, you know, the branch they're going into is usually on it. I think that'd be just such a, you know, make sure that we're, we're prepped for that when we're aware of it. I think it's, it's a, it's a big deal.
A big source of pride for students.
Oh, and for, and for us. I mean, honestly, it's a good look for us. We really had them right wherever they wanted to go.
And they have such a big part of the, you know, school culture and community. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, just to repeat, I would just ask for a cost of what, what that might be so that when we go through further discussions that we can make sure we've got that accounted for.
Yeah, we can give you an estimate on, you know, approximately how many students are involved in clubs and the cost of per cord and go from there.
Yeah, that would, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
The next question is from school board member Hardy. And says, on page five, I see there's a $12,300 budgeted to pay for helmet and shoulder pad repairs. Then on page 32 in line 11420, there is a $7,000 budgeted for replacing 20 football helmets and 15 shoulder pads. She just wants some clarification on why that is budgeted twice.
Yeah, so this question has come up over the years. So the $12,300 is for, it's a reconditioning budget. It's repairing helmets, softball, baseball, football, and lacrosse, such as, as it says, fixing chin straps once repaired. Helmets have to go through a certification process, which is an additional cost. For example, it's not down here, but to recondition a football helmet, that costs between $30 and $40 because they sanitize it, they clean it, they sand it, they have to repaint it. So there's a cost, and that goes with lacrosse, softball. So it's important to do that every year. The equipment is sanitized as well. We must have all of our football uniforms professionally cleaned to extend their life. The $7,000, so that's an additional cost to replace helmets for all sports mentioned above. They have a certain life. If they get a crack, you've got to replace them. And then they need to be replaced because they have failed what's called the National, Anoxie is the National Operating Committee on Standards for Athletic Equipment. So they get their like little sticker, and it's important, you know, for liability reasons that we send all of our equipment out each and every year. And it's like band uniforms. We send our, last year we didn't because we were in the pandemic, but we send our band uniforms out to get reconditioned and washed and all that, that extends their life.
I just say, that's an area that oftentimes comes up in terms of what's the difference. One's a contract service by an independent contractor that is providing a service to an existing piece of equipment, which is a separate object code in terms of financial accounting and school accounting from a procurement of a new item, new helmets, new shoulder pads. So, but that question oftentimes comes up.
Okay. The next few questions are from school board chair, who's going to have to tell me with your last name.
Gualume.
Gualume. And vice chair Rothaus. The first question is related to class sizes. It's who sets class sizes? And I'll answer that with, other than state, you know, state class size mandates of such as 24 in science and our own limit of 16 in art and tech for safety reasons. The high school determines class sizes during collaboration meetings with our guidance department, our department heads, and the administration. This determines class sections. Class sections determine class sizes, and it's really driven by student requests as well as if a teacher has a specific certification. So I'm learning through conversations with, you know, Rich and Pete that around 96% of student requests, because of our comprehensive curriculum, are typically met. So that kind of drives, you know, class sizes for each year, so. Do you have anything to add to that?
So can I ask a question on class sizes? So if we had a class, say geometry, and we were failing 20% of the kids in geometry, would we consider that information when we set the class size? So we set the class size at 24, but we know that 20 kids are failing geometry. So maybe we need to look at, you know, either geometry every day or, you know, lowering the class size so we have more success. So that, that's what you're taking into consideration when you're setting class sizes?
I think that's one of the things we're taking into consideration. If there's a high failure rate in a geometry, we may take that into consideration and add another section to lower the class size. We may, if there happens to be an elective that doesn't have a lot of students that year, we may shut that elective down and possibly run it the following year, then add another section of geometry to reduce the class side load.
And then just one more thing. So I just, I really believe very strongly that all kids can learn at high levels. So when we look at AP classes and honor classes, especially AP classes, and we see that we have lower numbers, you know, I just want, I don't want any roadblocks. So, you know, if a student in high school takes one AP class, their chances of being successful in college, it's astronomical. Even if that class is a stretch for them, even if they get a C in that class. So, you know, I just really want to say if we can remove the boundaries, you know, the roadblocks and let kids have that opportunity, I would really, you know, strongly support that.
Thank you.
I agree with board member Rothaus 100%. And I think as a district, you know, this is a good time to look at that too. And how can we give more kids that opportunity? And it particularly became clear to me a couple of years ago when we, we kind of, we kind of condensed the tiers of what we are offering. And, you know, what has been a concern, I think, for a lot of parents has been those kids, I would call them on the bubble, you know, where they're not quite, you know, the AP honors, but they're performing at a high level. And a lot of other kids have had the chance to be able to try to learn at a higher level. And I feel like particularly that cohort of kids, I feel like we need to create more opportunities when they or their families really want to try that challenge. And of course, I know we want to be sensitive, right? We don't, you don't want to set a child up for failure, a family up for failure. But I think that, I think we need to take more cues from the child in the family, have a conversation with them, have them, I don't even care, have them sign a contract of how, what they're going to do to try to perform at a high level. But if someone is yearning for that opportunity, I think, you know, as a district, we need to let them try to reach. And I feel like, you know, I'll be honest, I feel like a lot of times we really, kids end up in a track and they have a hard time getting to that, trying something at a higher level and showing that they can succeed. And I just think, you know, I think this is a good time, you know, we've spent transitions in the district. I feel like there's just a really good time to really look at that. And, you know, because it's not just, it's in every department, it's in every, you know, it's across the board, particularly when you get to the middle school, obviously that's where you're going to see, you know, where you have the different, you know, a lot of the class varieties and things like that. But I just wanted to add to that, and I feel pretty passionate about it, sorry. Jenna?
Uh, yeah, she knows I do too, because before I was on the school board for years, I would call her and tell her, they'll say, be like, Jenna, help me with this, right? That was like, oh yeah, I know, I'm not saying you didn't, I'm just saying, if I was annoying to her as a parent for years before we got on the school board was on that one particular issue, so for sure. And I'm going to add something to it that it, you know, is my new experience, is that when a student takes steps out and takes that challenge, we need to also, I don't feel like, you know, we need to be the ones scaffolding that person up all the time, right? If they're in honors, they have to be able to. But my head will blow off my shoulders, we have people saying, well, you're an honor student, you should be able to figure it out. No.
Sports need to be in place.
There needs to be support, there needs to be, this kid is coming forward and saying, I'm in honors, I'm being marginally successful, but I need help in this area. We shouldn't be shutting that kid down because they tried something and it's not immediately being successful. What we should be doing is scaffolding. And the phrase, you're in honors and you should be able to do that, just should never come out of anybody's mouth. So that's what, this is, that's what I'm, I want to piggyback, like absolutely, we should allow people to take that challenge. But if a kid is taking that challenge and being, you know, moderately successful but needs some support, we should provide that, because if you provide one quarter of support, those kids are often able to figure it out, unlock it, and move forward. And like Lori said, that gives them more ability to be successful in college, even if it's just an honors class. But if it's an AP class or whatever, our job is still to educate and provide support even to honors and AP students.
Well, and there's something, there's something even bigger about that, I think, and it's supporting kids and you can versus you can't. And, you know, when, you know, you keep getting told you can't, you believe it for yourself. And I think that's a tremendous disservice in situations, you know, if and when that's ever done. Whereas you can, we believe in you, we know you can do it, show us. And I think, I think that's another important piece to the puzzle. It's complex, obviously, it's very complex, I totally get it. But thanks for letting us get on the soapbox.
Can I jump on that soapbox for a second?
Yeah, sure.
So as an honors teacher in Algebra II, the thing that I have, I've heard parents, you know, say those things because they have high expectations for kids, they love their kids. But it goes back to that idea of the whole child. Someone who's an honor student academically may not be an honor student in executive function or in other areas. And so providing that, especially for a child who's branching out into honors or AP in kind of a scary area of their life, we want that, we want to be helping that whole student. And I've seen this even, you know, in my own life and in my family's life, that they may be brilliant, brilliant mathematicians, but they needed scaffolding help in English Lit, you know, and those kinds of things. We all have strengths and gifts in other areas. And, and so I love our student support and our student services department here in Merrimack. I think it does great, great, awesome, awesome work. But I agree, we shouldn't forget, and I'm not saying we do, but I'm just reminding all of us in the community not to forget the support of our honors and AP students.
Thank you, that's, you know, a topic for future conversation, I'll certainly share it with our department heads. I'm sure they have, they'll have a lot of thought on that, so thank you for that.
No, thank you for listening.
My next question is regarding our challenge day, which I believe we have not had probably in a couple.
We didn't have it, we didn't have a challenge day last year because of the pandemic, but, you know, we were going to afford, the question is about.
Does every freshman and every senior attend that challenge day?
And we afford every freshman and senior that chance if they would like to, you know, be involved in challenge day. We don't deny them. You know, there are few and far between students who opt out, but the majority of them will, you know, want to be involved in challenge day.
Next question is, we noticed that in 2021 for gifted and talented, we budgeted $14,600, and we only expended a little over $6,200. Oh, the question was, is this because of COVID? Yes, the full gifted and talented program did not run because our gifted and talented teacher picked up three science classes during the pandemic. We are running our full gifted and talented program now. And you may have asked another part of that question that didn't make it in here, because I have an answer, but I don't have the question.
Okay.
I think it's regarding how was the money spent?
Yeah, I think that was probably it.
It looks like Artist in Residence was part of that $6,200 Granite State Challenge and Quiz Bowl. We had to purchase new question sets, uniforms, electronic buzzes, et cetera. Since most of the gifted and talented wasn't running, the former principal approved replacing some of the equipment and updating the question sets for the two clubs so they could practice. Trick or treat supplies for homeroom and AP testing supplies, so that's where that money was spent.
Thank you.
Next question, there is a $43,000, there's $43,000 in budget for a 504 coordinator, but it was our understanding that we added these responsibilities to our newly created position for SEL. And then follow-up to that was how many kids currently at Merrimack High School have a 504?
Steve, do you want me to take this one?
You can, sure.
So we, that this $43,000 was already budgeted for the 504 coordinator, and it only pertains to the high school. The high school has a very heavy load of 504 students. And the position that we have, Fern's position, is she's overseeing kindergarten through eighth grade 504, the 504 coordinators are counselors and working in concert with them. And you can ask the second part.
Yeah, the follow-up is that we currently have 208 students with a 504 and eight to 10 more in the referral pipeline. We've had a pretty significant increase of 504 referrals due to stress, anxiety, and other pandemic-related issues. The next question's related to athletics. Because MHS does not have a turf field, how many varsity athletic teams have to pay for field use at other facilities during preseason? And is there adequate space for all teams to be at the Merrimack High School fields? Do kids in booster clubs have to pay for any field space?
So I'll answer that question. None of our teams are required to pay for off-site practice space. On occasion, booster clubs may pay for turf practice to prepare for a game on the turf or rent a facility indoors due to, you know, poor, poor weather. You know, I think it goes without saying, as far as, part of the question was, is there adequate space for all teams? I think you can look across the United States in every community, small town, big city. You know, all high schools would like to have more, more space, you know, more, more field space. And, you know, goes without saying, you know, I think we all know at this, where we are all sitting that, you know, a lot of schools do have turf fields, which are nice, and they still require maintenance, you know, obviously from right after school till whatever the school district or town decides. They can throw in the lights and have events going on up to nine, 10 o'clock at night, but you still need practice space too.
Lori. So this goes back to, you know, being on the school planning and building committee, you know, we've talked about that turf field. But I didn't really realize until the last two years that it's not, it's a critical shortage, and it's a shortage to the place where we're paying for field space, some out of booster clubs, some out of the budget every single year. And I think it's really important that, you know, I know Matt's working on the plan, but there's no space around the high school. But we are in critical need, you know, maybe work with the town, but we need fields for athletics. And it would be nice if the kids were able to walk or get to the field space without having to take a bus or, you know. It's been that way for a very long time because Merrimack built that, you know, high school. And it really, it was, it was fine in 1950, but then they did all the additions onto the, onto the field space and you have a highway. So, you know, a long time ago, I was telling Cindy, I talked to Peter Flood, and he had just decided, he was building those condos on McElwain Street. This is like 30 years ago, and I said, Peter, you can't build condos there, we need that for field space. And he said, if you would have talked to me 30 days ago, I already signed the contract, Lori, you know, I'm like, oh, you know, because it's critical.
Lori, I have to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, part of the reason for bringing this up too is to continue to have this conversation at the table so the community hears us, you know, as some of these items to help rectify the situation come up in the future years, that we're continuing to have that conversation about the field shortages and some of the challenges we have with our own fields, about the money that we have to pay to bus and send our kids, you know, although I guess we don't bus them when they're their home place. But you've got tennis courts way on one end of town, very far away from the high school. And then you've got the GPS fields for soccer, very far away from the high school in a different town. And at least the tennis courts at Wasserman are still in the same town. But I think the more that we have that conversation, the more visibility it puts, you know, on the issue.
Yes, as part of the master plan Steve Keach study, I mean, I've often said that unfortunately, the way the master cola complex has been built up over the course of generations, we're really, we really have the look and feel of an urban school district in a suburban community. And that kind of really, kind of lends itself, or really kind of reveals itself when you look at the need for field space alongside of the high school and next to the high school. There's no place for it. We have the lower ball field, which is, I guess, the varsity practice field down there. And I don't think too many people even know that that's there, but that's there, but it's not optimal. And then we have the one football field, then we have, I still. And then we have the one football field, then we have, I still call it O'Neill Field over there. You know, I'm going to do that for a while. But I recall what you had said, Laurie, about those condos. Someone conveyed a story to me about how the purchasing of that land would have been really advantageous for the district from a long-term perspective. You know, as was, you know, basically, even though it's an acre, acre and a half, the purchase of Brentwood is going to, to help us out in some form or fashion, you know. So to have a turf field will give us more utilization, but it's not going to give us more space for more activities happening, you know, at the same time. So it is kind of a conundrum. There was a study done ten years ago by Tim Tenhave uh, that was presented to the town council. I think it was presented to the school board too about, uh.
Two thousand and ten Fields Needs Committee.
Two thousand and ten?
Yeah, I was on that committee and closed it out.
See, Shannon, I say the thing, she, she knows right away what I'm talking about.
Matt, would you mind sending that? Would you mind getting a copy of that and just sending that to?
I have it on my computer, yeah.
We have a copy of, we had a school board delegate and when I came on the board, the person who served during that development phase was no longer on the board. So for the last probably three, four months of it, I was the school board delegate. So we had a seat and we have a copy of it.
Yeah.
And I, and I've read it, I mean, I've read it before. I'm sure I have a copy of it as well.
Yeah.
Um, but we have new members on the board and who haven't seen it and.
It's irrelevant. I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to dismiss, but the thing is it has Coleman, it has Anheuser-Busch in there. It has, um, the Flatley Properties that are now apartments in there. So there's a lot of stuff that, like, it's, it's.
Yeah, but it's irrelevant in an alarming way.
Exactly.
Because it concluded at the end of that, because I, I read that when I was driving the whole thing about getting the turf field in front of the voters, is it, it said in two thousand and ten, we have a critical field shortage. And it included, how many did you just list? Things that we no longer have anymore.
Things that are now not on the plate.
Correct. So if we had a critical shortage then, imagine what it's like now.
Right.
And a turf field only would, it would only kind of solve a little bit of the problem, but we'd still have a shortage. However, the fact that we could use it, I mean, the soccer players can't play on it because the football players need to be able to play on it. And we got to pick and choose, what do we like more? Soccer or football? Because only one team can use the field, otherwise it gets torn up.
Or the marching band practices in the parking lot. Serenades me in front of, in front of our office.
But they don't, they don't get the field unless there's a game on.
Right.
So having a turf field, like you said, utilization alone will solve a fraction of the problems. I mean, nobody wants to hear me say we need two turf fields in Merrimack, but NY is going to have to take care of the other one. But like, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying we need two turf fields, everyone in Merrimack. But I'm just saying, we do. We need more, we need a solution. We need a solution. And a turf field on our school property would solve a fraction of our school issues. And then maybe the town could get a slice on the weekends.
Yeah, and the, and the only really, uh, last piece of land that we own is the Timmins site on South Babusick Lake Road, which is around forty acres. A little bit of it is punky. It couldn't, it couldn't support a school facility because I don't believe there's SOAR up there yet. And so you'd have to do leach field, but it could potentially support some sort of athletic field. Or you could, you know, go up to the middle school, up to the upper part where it's nice and flat. And there's an area there that could also support a, another athletic field. So there are opportunities. But that area where the middle school is going up past the existing field was, I have plans in my office on my computer and you know what I'm going to say, that that's the location for an additional school if we ever needed to do that in the future. You know, that's our one location.
That's a topic for another day.
That is a topic for another day. And that is not, that's, that's a topic that I'm not going to be here to discuss, so.
Anyways, I think.
Love the passion though. So, so we've got a few more questions left. The next one's is related to budget, uh, line item one hundred, one, one oh eight, which is consumable, workbooks, relates to workbooks, consumables. We're assuming the majority of the expense for this item relates to workbooks. Please confirm.
So these are phys ed supplies. So some of the expense, uh, goes to, uh, the workbooks for PE one and PE two, uh, but also expenses such as face shields for students to use, uh, while they're learning CPR and they do that in PE two, you know, just basketballs, table tennis balls, gloves, floor tape, things of that. But the workbooks are used for PE one and PE two. Uh, we don't have textbooks. Our, our health and phys ed teachers draw from, uh, many resources, uh, to enhance the PE curriculum and, uh, health curriculum. And at, at this time, uh, we are revising the health curriculum. So we're doing good work with that.
Good. Great.
Did you skip a question on sixteen fifty?
Yeah, we didn't, we, we weren't able to get to that one. Yeah. Uh, next question's regarding to woodworking. It looks like we are spending about eighty dollars student for supplies. Does this call, uh, cover all expenses for class projects?
So, so it does. We have a very outstanding, well-connected woodworking teacher in Phil Carl. And, and Phil and I talked and we definitely do not charge students for supplies for woodworking. In fact, he would go on to say, we're one of the few students that do not charge, uh, for projects that the students build. Uh, so all, all, all projects are covered.
Line item, um, one hundred, one, one, two, three. It looks like this line, uh, this budget line continues to decrease. This is a, a, a reading software. And, you know, I was consulted with, um, Rich Zampiri about this. He was very familiar with it. Um, in past years, approximately two thousand dollars was dedicated to software that was in the wrong line item. Uh, we've corrected that and moved it to the eighty-six fifty account, which is reading software. Uh, and this is a remedial, uh, remedial reading program. So that's why that switch was made. Next question's regarding baseball. Please further explain the breakdown of the thirty-five hundred dollars for baseball.
So, uh, when you look at baseball, uh, we have three teams, our freshmen, JV, and our varsity. Uh, we have to buy, uh, caps for, uh, you know, those athletes every year in the needed baseball, uh, supplies for, for all three teams. So, uh, those are, those are supplies we need each and every year.
Did we, uh, did, it looks like, um, a question regarding unified soccer, but that was answered earlier. Okay. And then explain the family ID expense.
So, uh, family IDs are athletic registration, uh, platform. And we've used it over the past four years. Uh, it streamlines all paperwork. Uh, I think parents like it. Uh, you can put an app on your phone. Coaches have access to all the player information on their mobile devices used by many other schools. It's a very valuable tool and, and used district-wide for, for other reasons.
Coaches basically don't have to have the, being a coach for many years, they don't have to have those big folders anymore. It's everything's not right on your phone. So if you need to access anything related to your players, you have it right there on your mobile device, so.
And also, once you register your player, you don't, you can go in each year and choose your player again and only change what needs to be changed. Everything else is there, which, God bless that.
Yes. Uh, we have a question regarding textbooks. What is the cycle of how textbooks are purchased at the high school? And how many classes have we done online textbook licensing, licensing for? Are there areas of overlap where we have classes that we buy both online textbooks and also a hard copy? Textbook companies usually, usually make you buy hard covers to get an online version. Recent revisions to the math and science curriculums include text purchase to support the updates. We have purchased class sets, which are shared, not one for every student, and added additional online subscriptions for all students to have access. Some online subscriptions are five to six, uh, lasts as much as five to six years as we are requesting a renewal for biology this year. Uh, that six-year, uh, subscription is up. Actively Learn is an annual subscription, which is something we'll answer in the next question. Uh, other reasons to purchase texts might be the age, making it difficult to replace as well as in, as in the case of social studies where we're replacing our street law books this year, uh, for next year because they are from nineteen ninety-nine and they contain outdated court cases. Any, any questions around that? And I believe this is our last question. And, and we are also very excited about the English software. Actively Learn, uh, what kind of professional develop has been completed and will be completed to ensure that all students have access and that the district, uh, district is getting full value of the purchase? What period is included in this fee? One year, ten years? Is it subscription-based? Uh, Actively Learn is a one-year subscription and because it is an English language arts software, all students have access to it due to our English graduation requirements. It does have an annual fee. Um, I, I, I asked our department heads from, for some data of use this year. Um, so from September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one until yesterday, January third, there's been one thousand and one active student learners, four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight active learning hours, and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-four reading questions assigned, evaluated, and/or discussed. So this is a, a program that is being used readily by, uh, the English department. And, and we, because we, we hope to purchase it, um, for English and language arts next year, there's a significant discount for the social studies department and they would like to implement it as, as well. So that's kind of where we're at with Actively Learn. Any other?
Any other questions?
May I just make one observation?
Yep.
Having worked in a, a state for many years with a revenue raising limitation of proposition two and a half, it is wonderful in going through this budget to understand the opportunities for students, sports, co-curricular activities, band, strings, uh, music, um, the ability to access the parking lot without a fee, uh, school bus transportation. In some cases in Massachusetts, students and families were paying up to six thousand dollars a year in addition to their taxes just to allow students to have access to those essential and very important developmental services. And I, I applaud the school district and all of you for allowing students to access these great opportunities with no fees because it makes all the difference in the world.
I just have one more thing to say.
Laurie?
So I just want to thank you very much because, um, you know, Cindy and I had, it was due to, I had a, a number of appointments. So us getting together was a little bit, uh, tricky, but we, I know we gave you those questions very late. We really didn't expect you to have all the answers tonight. So I know that must have been a real stressful situation. So thank you very much for coming so prepared and having all those answers for us because we fully did not expect for you to be, you know, to be able to turn around so quickly. So very appreciative.
You're welcome. Thank you. For, for, for my first experience, I enjoyed being here. Thank you for the opportunity.
We enjoyed having you here, so.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Have a nice evening. Of course, happy new year to you too.
Thank you.
You only get to say it for a few days.
It's already the old school.
Yeah, you want to see. Matt's got this.
Thank you.
Please don't trip. Yeah, just saw my ankle.
Okay. Next up is the formal presentation on the district budget.
Well, you know, first before Steve and Pete leave, I just want to thank them for their, for their efforts this year. It's been a tough couple of years. And to reinforce what, what Bill just stated, um, while I was researching Mr. Olson before he became my boss, I had the opportunity to cruise through his budget in Westford. And when he says that they are so fee-heavy down in Mass, it's probably in Chumpstead and Westford and Drake at Lowell, whatever, he is not kidding. I was, I had to look at those numbers at least three or four times to fully comprehend the amount of fees that they charge. And when he says there's like four to five thousand dollars for some people who are on top of their taxes to be involved in activities, co-curriculars, whatever, I was just absolutely shocked. So anyway, I just wanted to.
About eight million dollars of our operations were supported by fees.
Yeah. Eight million dollars. Yeah.
That's the overall budget. What was the overall budget for a year?
Well, the overall budget, we had an overall budget of about sixty, when I, when I left, about sixty-two million. But with the eight million dollars in fees, it was actually seventy million to operate the school system. So it was, uh, it was an extraordinary burden for, for parents.
And I, I can also say, it was actually a little bit, I, I don't mean, I don't, sir, I don't mean to give you. But, you know, I was, I was looking around for what the difference was. And the difference was the town of Westford holds all the benefits, like the health insurance and everything like that. So when you stack that on top, you get to our level, you know. So that, that's what I, I was trying to put the pieces together. So I, that, that, this isn't either here nor there, just that I was curious, okay? Sorry, Bill. But the, uh, the, the, the district budget is composed primarily of, uh, you know, contractual obligations. It's our FICA, it's our Medicare, it's our health insurance, which did go down one point four percent is the, you know, you say the guaranteed maximum rate increase, but it's not a rate increase, it's a rate decrease. It could go down further, could, or it could stay right there. And so that, that's, um, you know, a cost reduction of around four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to the operating budget. Um, most of the other items, um, we left, um, level, level funded throughout the budget. Audit costs, everything like that. The only areas we kind of increased were our property liability insurance, our, um, some of our workers comping up. Those are rates that we get from Primex. Primex is, uh, an insurance exchange in the state of New Hampshire, uh, which a lot of towns and school districts avail themselves of to get a better pooled rate for risk management services of, of all types. And they offer a lot of training for our staff, uh, that we avail ourselves of, um, every single year. So essentially that, that is the, the district budget in a, in a nutshell. There are a few questions. And I'll start off. This is from Shannon. Uh, there's a line in the budget called transitional academic support. That's probably around maybe four, five years old now. Uh, it's eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, this program's for targeted interventions and evening academy and doing the transition between, uh, middle school and high school. Kim's going to help me out on this. And the question is, you know, why isn't it part of the Merrimack High School budget? And I guess from a, from a style point and from getting it off the ground, we initially stuck it in the district budget in order to talk to it and have the superintendent talk to it. It could very well be placed in the high school budget. However, there is a component where we're going from middle school to high where it kind of traverses two different levels. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Kim?
Yeah, exactly. This is a relatively new, um, line item and it originally was designed to address the middle school transition to the high school. So do you put it in the middle school budget or do you put it in the high school budget when it's a transitional program for students?
Yeah.
To help with that, um, there's part of the evening academies and summer programs.
And, and to that end, you know, wow, that's, look at that, sorry guys. Uh, but to that end, I think it is like, they are pretty much entering high school and that's why we have the transitional program for high school. So I know it's a couple of weeks early, but technically they're, you know, up, up and coming ninth graders. And I think when you look at transitional, I wasn't even exactly sure where it was. Is it transitional for, say, and I almost thought that, is it high school? Is it special education? Um, because again, could it be transitional to the workplace for, you know, so I, it just, it has such a vagueness to it by being in the central office budget. You can't really see its source of purpose and its function and just where it sits. I think that was really, you know, and again, if there are transitional supports for those for, you know, that are not college or career-ready, that's a whole different ball of wax. But that's the first thing I considered it being when I looked at it. And I think that, that, for me to have that much question after twelve years, it just might, you know, in the, in the right spot, it might have a little more clarity just by where it. in the right spot, it might have a little more clarity just by where it sits. But then I think a little more definition around what those programs are would probably help to, to understand where the funding is, is dedicated.
Okay. Fair enough. The next question is from Board Member Barnes. What would the $100,000 be used for? This is pertaining to the, the COVID contingency account that we started last year, because we had no idea, essentially, last year when we were building this budget at this time for, for '21, '22, you know, what was going to be the, the funding from the state, what we were going to get from ESAR. Those monies came really late. We had no, we had little indication, although we did have some. We went through a majority of the money that we have. We have $700,000 left in the ESAR III fund right now. We're looking at that for perhaps a computer refresh. And I really seen that we have a new technology director on board. He has an inventory of all the computers that we have. And, you know, right now, we're looking at almost 2,000 laptop desktops. We're looking at 3,800 Chromebooks, and we're looking at around 1,400 iPads district-wide. However, what we need to do is take that list, and we need to age it. And we need to see, when did we buy it? How long has it been? What condition is it in? We need to come up with another kind of a replacement cycle for that. And so the money would be used from the ESAR funds. That's an appropriate place for it. But there's other items that we're looking at that we're really not sure how in the future it's going to play out depending upon what variant we're talking about next year or if we're talking about a different variant next year. You know, right now, I'm in a mask shortage. You know, the schools are clamoring for masks. It wasn't our intent to provide masks at first, but now there seems to be the need for disposable masks like we're wearing right now when kids come into the building. They either drop theirs, they lose them in the parking lot, they forget them in their car. And high school, and the high school people says, well, don't go back to your car, here's a mask. So there's a lot of those that have to be done. So it's just, you know, seeing it's in the budget, it's in, it's incorporated in the default budget. And, you know, it's a contingency for unanticipated needs. We may need a refresh of our Clorox T360 machines that we've only been using in limited capacity. When we first bought them the first year, it was, there were no after-school activities. 3 o'clock, building was closed, go home, including administrators. So the custodial crew could start fogging the buildings completely. And they were doing that every single night while we were remote. And we'd do that if we have a breakout in a certain number of rooms. We could do four or five rooms. But if you're going to do a whole building, you need the time to do that. Because one custodian can do maybe 22,000 square feet in an evening, and it takes pretty much the whole crew to do, to do the building. So these are some things that we're looking at that may or may not happen. So it's a contingency account. And basically, it, it's up to the pleasure of the board if they want to, you know, keep that there as kind of a safeguard just in case the ESAR monies aren't enough to cover us once we look at the technology needs and once we look at any instructional needs or social emotional needs that aren't covered in the SEL budget that we can park in the ESAR funds, because that's a perfect place for them also.
Makes total sense. And honestly, you know, before hearing the technology presentation last night, that's exactly what my thought was. But now hearing, you know, obviously you have a new technology director that has some thoughts on where deltas are. And again, what you just talked about with refresh, we can't look at those funds for anything other than infrastructure at this point.
Yeah. Refresh, and we're looking at, actually, you know, to be, to be honest with you, we're looking at some of the cabling in the building right now. Some of the cabling is just Cat 5. It's not even E. And that's one of the first things that Jason said to me when I talked to him in my office. He says, you know, we've got to look at this, because you'll never get gigabit to the desktop with Cat 5. It's just not going to happen. And there's other little points of failure that we need to address. So it's going to be an ongoing process that kind of reveals itself during the course of the year. And he gets up to speed. I've given him, I think, until Friday to get up to speed and give me your full accounting of everything. No, I'm only kidding. But I'm, you know, I'm so excited he's here, so it's going to be great working with, with him. We still have Mark Maryfield on board helping us out, which is an awesome thing. And Luda with Power School and Allison Huckins with the DSLs and the learning management systems and everything like that. Got a darn good crew going on.
Great.
So we want to keep the, keep the momentum going.
Sounds good.
Okay. So committee work. This is by Cindy and Laurie. Committee work, do we pay an hourly rate for compensation for instructional staff who work on district committees? Well, this was new learning for me, because this was something that Marge always figured out. It was brokered by Marge and Sally Kinney back in the day. And it's been $26,000 every single year since then. And so it's a formula not to exceed 26,000. That's based on 15 hours worked on a committee. If you work less than 15 hours, you don't qualify for this. You work 14, you don't qualify. But if you work 15 or more, you qualify for it. There are three levels of participation. In the 15 to 20-hour range, it's called basic. This sounds so much like Marge, it's, it's kind of like deja vu to me right now.
It's like a pool that has a methodology.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And so 21 to 33 hours, you're proficient. It's almost like Denny and Cinni, you know? And then 34 or more hours, you're advanced. And so there's a rating formula based upon these three levels that basic gets a lump sum of 302. Proficient gets a lump sum of 402, and advanced gets a lump sum of 502. So those numbers can change depending upon the number of people and where they're at. But the bottom line is you can't go over 26,000. So this is kind of, you plug in $300, see what it looks like with $100 separating basic, advanced, proficient, and you see if you get to $26,000. If you don't, then you may have to tweak it up a little bit or tweak it down a little bit, depending upon the number of participants. If you're involved in an SLP project and you're involved in a committee that aligns with your SLP project, this doesn't count. So this is over and above any SLP or any, any other work that you do in the district. This is totally separate and over and above. So that's how that works, and I am better off for having that knowledge now, because now I understand it fully, so.
So it becomes like a token of appreciation, really, right? A lot of money.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. You know, these people, you know, a lot of them, you know, there's 37 people based, 28 in seven advance, you know? I'm, I'm sure there were a lot of hours that weren't counted just doing work at your house, you know?
Right. People are just being generous with their time and being helpful and team players and all of them.
Okay. Then we have a question from Cindy and Laurie. Rate for New Hampshire for retirement is 21.02. Tell us about how much the rate increased since last year. Well, last year, which I'm thinking about, because we're talking about next year. So this year, the rate is still 21.2. In '22, '23, it's going to be the same. So the amount appropriated is, the amount budgeted is the same as last year's appropriation. So, because when they, when in New Hampshire time it sets the rates, they do it on a biennial basis. For the most part. There have been exceptions. When the actuaries get involved and they find out they're a little bit underwater as far as their credibility goes, that they'll give you a second year bump. Their goal, the New Hampshire retirement system, and we did have somebody here from the New Hampshire retirement system a few years ago to talk to us about this, is to be 80% credible. From an actuarial standpoint, 80% is, is pretty good. And I think they're, they're almost on their way. I can't tell you what percentage credibility that they're, they're at right now. But this is looking at, you know, how much funds do you have to fund your future liabilities going into, you know, next 10, 20, 30 years that you already have captured? There's been a lot of changes to the system over the years. As an employee, we used to get 5% of our income go to the New Hampshire retirement system. And around maybe seven years ago, it changed to 7%. In Massachusetts, where Bill's from, I think it's 10%. 10 and 11, yeah. So, you know, it, it, it varies. So it's based upon like a three- to five-year look back. And they've been playing catch-up for a long time. Because this is a little pet peeve of mine, okay? Because I, I, they, I'd look back in 1975 when this was established. And there was a period in the 80s when the economy with the dot-com industry was chugging, chugging along, and people were making money and investments were going boom. And so instead of keeping the school district or the police and fire or the town workers, the highway workers, everything like that, instead of keeping that contribution in the 4% to 5% increase, not increase, but 4%, 5% level every single year, they dropped it down to like 0.8%. 0.8%. 0.7%. So this is like a six-year block in the history of the New Hampshire retirement system, where they chose to give the town a break. I remember, I wasn't working in a town back then, but I remember when I first started in, in, in '98 over in Hookset, '98? No, it was 1990. Started in Hookset, I mean, the New Hampshire retirement rates were really, really small. And there was kind of a little bit of a lack of leadership and vision on this. If they would have done what, if they would have remained consistent during those boom periods when the economy was really taking off, they would have not been in the position they're in today. You can see that if you're a police and fire man, firefighter, it's 34%, almost 34% of a fire or police officer's wages goes to the New Hampshire retirement system. That's a heavy burden for the town to carry, and it's a heavy burden for the, a school district to carry. And it's been, it's been increasing every single year. I'm waiting for the year, you know, where it kind of levels off. And hopefully, that'll, that'll be shortly. But it all is dependent upon how the markets do and what they do as far as, you know, in the last five years and then the actuaries, which they probably should listen to a little bit more often, who kind of prognosticate what they should be looking at in the future. But it's adjusted every two years. So that is that question. That concludes the district budget questions.
All right.
If there's anything further, be happy to answer those.
Any questions or any comments?
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you all for kind of getting the whole process pulled together throughout this fall. We're very busy. You're welcome. Next up is other. Any, anything, any other items anyone wants to discuss? I just have one. That is just a, to let, just a reminder that on Tuesday, the 11th, at 7:00 PM, is our work session and warrant article discussion. That's in the Matthew Thornton room. And then on Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00, another work session, which is the review of the budget. So those are the up and coming items as it relates to the budget process. And after that, it then goes on to the budget committee. We have all of those dates on our website as well, right? So that anyone looking at home can follow it along. So I just wanted to remind folks of that. Anything else for other? Shannon?
Is the 13th as needed? Because I think we've done it where we did a work session, made motions, because we've gone through the budget, to be able to calculate and formulate our questions and, and potential adjustments we want to make. So I think what we've always done is if we felt as needed, we would, you know, we could actually move the budget forward that night. But if we feel we need more information, that's when we would come back and do, do another session. Then we could move the budget forward.
That's right. If we finish our work session and we finish all the work that we're doing, then we're all set, we would not need to meet on the 13th.
Gotcha. Okay. And with that, we may want to make sure we're posting it as such where it's work session. And then just put the other one as needed if, if budget isn't moved on the 11th.
I think that's a good and fair recommendation. So Bill and Matt, if you could take care of that on all of our postings and whatnot. Okay. Next up is public comments on agenda items. There are no public here, so I just want to see if there's any.
There's no email.
Okay, great. So then we will move on, and I will accept a motion to adjourn made by Lori Ratha, second by Shannon Barnes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, none, 5-0-0. Thank you, and have a good night.